Hello, everyone. Since the Downtown Development Authority meeting just left, I think we're pretty much with the council members that are attending and with a couple online. I believe we have the proper people here. So I think we ought to begin this meeting. And I think according to this agenda that I have, that can start with the budget overview of Director Bloom and Sophia.
Thank you, Councilmember Layborn. I'll call you Chair, President today.
You can call me Chair.
Chair, Chairman Layborn, Charles Bloom, Planning and Development Director. I'm here with Sophia Mays. She's with our Downtown Development Authority. As he mentioned, we just wrapped up the Downtown Development Authority Board Meeting and Work Session here before. I prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation that some of you may have seen some elements of this through the new council member training, but this one is a little bit more enhanced to talk a little bit more in detail about the budget itself. So what we have here, this is an aerial view that was taken in 2023 of some of our new development in the community. This is over on Carlson and Converse behind the Walmart and Sam's Club facility. If you were to drive by there today, you'll see a much different picture. You'll see new multifamily development that's going on and continued commitment to housing in the community.
Excuse me, Mr. Bloom.
Yes?
According to the agenda that I have here, the Downtown Development Authority is to be first and your Planning and Development Department is to follow. It seems to me you're starting with your department rather than following the agenda. Is that correct?
Chair, I can go ahead and we can go to the Downtown Development Authority and start there if you would like.
Well, that's the agenda, sir.
Perfect. I will go ahead and fast forward to the Downtown Development Authority. Then we can go back to the presentation with the overall overview of planning and development. You do? Do I put your presentation in?
All right. Chair, through you. My name is Sophia Mays, DDA Administrator, and I am here to present the fiscal year 2026 budget for the DDA. So this is a very high-level overview. We have, starting with staff, we have two full-time staff members, including myself. We have Irene Parsons, our DDA Operations Coordinator. And then we also have one part-time staff member. Her name is Mia Dubusk, and she is our Social Media Assistant. She is at 20 hours per week. Our strategic goals for this fiscal year. We recently completed, adopted our plan of development for the DDA, and that includes some several priorities. We are looking at focusing on the 15th Street Experience, our website updates and our communications as well as public perception. We are also highlighting or focusing on our resource repository, which includes data and benchmarking for downtown, the CBD analysis, as well as DDA accomplishments that we have throughout the year. We are focusing on enhancing downtown parking, planning in additional spaces, and streetscape and greenscape enhancements with the planter program and street fixtures, gateway enhancements and wayfinding signage. And then at a later date, working on winter events and seeing how we can get more people downtown during the winter off-season. Translating into operational goals, that means increasing capacity and focus. Throughout the years, there's been a lot of scope creep, a lot of moving focuses, and we're really trying to get surgical with what we focus on and increasing our capacity and make sure we're effective. Our communications, we started a quarterly newsletter, and we will start to do more regular communications via email. We've really beefed up our social media presence and other communications and are focusing on doing more outreach activities throughout the downtown on a weekly basis. We're looking at redesigning our grant programs to focus on how those can more support the plan of development. They have historically been focused on private properties, individual properties, and we are looking to see how they can fit more with the DDA role, statutory role, as well as our goals. Our beautification programs, we are currently getting a vendor ready for our planter program for the 2025 summer. However, we are looking at how we can make this a more effective program by having an annual contract and having that be something that is a long-term throughout-the-year planning process to make sure it's effective. And we're not doing this last-minute, anything last-minute or just kind of throwing something together. We are looking at benchmarking and data analysis, specifically year-over-year reports, as well as finding reports that can be helpful for recruitment for developers, investors, and businesses in our downtown to help them make it as easy as possible to see if investing in downtown is a good business fit. Other actions we're exploring is potentially a community benefits plan. I know that there is worry among council members as well as community members about things such as gentrification and other negative impacts to our community. And so something we would like to explore is having more downtown stakeholder input, community input, to ensure that any investment or development is an actual benefit to our community. We are also looking into getting our DDA foundation a little bit more robust so that we can fill some of those gaps that the DDA can't fill in terms of business support and event planning for downtown businesses. Our fiscal year 2026, our total operating budget is $728,450. That is, skipping to the bottom of the slide, that is specifically keeping about $785,000 in reserves in the event that the city does not choose to extend the work program agreement. Those are for potentially staff operation personnel costs. We would have to amend the resolution for the mill levy, but that is something we could potentially do. We are looking at a city in-kind contribution of $251,000. That is specifically for administrative and personnel support. That pays my salary and my two staff members' pay as well as benefits. Other things to note in this budget is the DDA Board Strategic Projects. We have budgeted $100,000 total. I think that's a little, it's very cautious, but we want to have some good wins on some of these plan of development projects before we put too much into that line item. We also have a communications plan. It states $10,000 total. That may be increased depending on the responses, the proposals we receive, and how comprehensive we want that to be. We have a line item of sponsorship. This past summer, we sponsored Fridays on the Plaza, and that amount was about $35,000. So we decided to increase our line item for fiscal year 26 to $45,000 to be able to cover up that as a potential cost next season as well as other community sponsorship opportunities. So critical budget changes from our fiscal year 2025 budget is the assumption of $23,000, over $23,000 increase in the mill levy, which would total about $487,000 for the annual mill levy collections. We also anticipate a $400 decrease in the interest earned. Our current investment in the Wyoming Government Investment Fund is about a little over $1 million. And we saw a decrease in our last year's budget, so we are assuming the same for this year. Overall, our total operating budget is a decrease of $349,000, a little over that from last year. We are keeping, or we have $131,450 in our operating budget from reserves. We are also anticipating a $30,000 grant from the Joint Powers Economic Board that will be decided for a specific project use. And then we anticipate $5,000 from Laramie County. Any stand for questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mays. I attended the DDA Board Meeting that was immediately prior to this, to our meeting, and there was a lot of interesting discussion and actions there that definitely, I think, have a bearing on what we're talking about here. One of the key things, could you go back one slide? I think it was the previous one. So it was the communication plan and the $10,000. Didn't the board just bump that up to 60 in the meeting I was just at?
Chair, they bumped up the RFP language to 60,000. They did not make a motion to amend the budget at this point in time.
Well, I would point out that that's a very interesting way to do business and that if you are suggesting that you have that kind of funding for that purpose, but it's not in the budget, I think that's an issue. I also would like to point out, and I don't believe you've touched on, are you going to discuss the memorandum of understanding and the way that it came before the board a few minutes ago?
Chair, we can discuss that. We had included the draft MOU in our staff report that was posted on Monday. There were no material changes. It was more of a simplification of the MOU. And our plan is to, because we presented it to the board and we also had it available on the TV during our meeting, but we will also be including it in the minutes.
Well, I just want the members of the council to understand that this question of the MOU and how it is adopted or not adopted is a matter of great interest to downtown businesspeople, including myself, that I think really needs some attention here. I believe that what we had was an online comment opportunity. Is that correct? Am I correct in what I heard earlier today?
Chair, are you referring to the survey that we utilized for feedback? Yes.
So I think those have value. But I think the real value comes to face-to-face communication with the people involved. And that's people who, as I'm sure all members of the council thoroughly understand and experience, you have to experience that venting. We certainly do. And I think that without that, there's a lack here in this memorandum discussion that really needs some attention here. Whether or not the contribution that the city, that we make has appropriated funds, very important. Whether or not the staff of the DDA stays on city salary, whether or not the communication between those members of the city and that have a variety of interests in communication here, like Treasurer Lockman, there's just a lot of complexity to it. And it's complexity that really has come to the forefront over the past few months for a variety of reasons. And so I know we've got to move along here, but I do think that it's important to note that we have a program here that has, by Wyoming standards, a robust budget. That reserve is really very significant and certainly a compliment to past boards for saving that money up. And where it goes now, we need to determine. So a lot of good things happening downtown. I would mention that, Ms. Mays, I didn't hear you mention the sidewalk improvement program. How's that going?
Chair, I did not mention that as it is not a change, a significant change from last year's budget. And there have been no increase in funding. It's committed. And it is a pilot program. It is not as utilized as we would like it to be. There have been some restrictions in terms of city engineering fund or time and putting pressure on them, especially during the busy summer season. I want to be mindful of their time and the other projects that they need to complete. We also have had at least one that I am aware of where, because it is a reimbursement match program, the property owner is having a difficult time financing the upfront amount in order to get reimbursed. So there are some things that I would like to evaluate about that program to make it more effective and potentially even looking at maybe not partnering with the City Engineering Office as much or 1% construction, maybe potentially looking at how we can move that program faster.
Thank you. I look forward to discussing that with you. So shall we proceed with the council questions? Mr. Escobal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I know that over the past year, there's been a number of community outreach events. And certainly when you only have one person, you know, or one employee that's doing that, you know, I believe that there's been a lot of opportunities for face-to-face with people that have businesses in downtown. And those opportunities are certainly there. But again, you know, one employee, and I know she's busting her tail out there to get our message out, and there's no reason here for her. My question is, on the health insurance, I've noticed a lot of increases and decreases in the budgets. But again, two employees and there's a $15,909 decrease. What's the reason for that?
Chair, through you to Councilmember Escobal. The reason for that is that when the prior DDA Administrator was there, they had a different insurance plan. So this new person is employee-only, so the cost is less to the city. So that adjustment was made to reflect the actual insurance cost to the city.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is a question about the sidewalk program. Is also looking at making, you know, let's say fixes, so like some of the bricks falling down and also cracks in the sidewalks. As I always say, the little things matter more, attention to detail. And I've seen some of the sidewalk improvements, which is great, not just there, but also in Ward 3. Are you looking to look into that as well, too? Just like some of the bricks, I was walking there off Lincoln Way. Some of them are crumbling there in the road.
Chair, through you. Yes, we are evaluating, we have a couple of different grant programs with the DDA. We have a capital improvements grant. In the past, we've had a facade improvement grant. And then we also have the pilot sidewalk improvement grant. All of those are reimbursement-based grants. And we, in the turnover, I'm having a difficult time finding the last approved parameters for those programs or specifically for facade improvement. So in our upcoming work session, which will be on May 28th, and we will be putting a press release out for that, May 28th, 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., 1920 THOMES in that conference room, we will be discussing how we'd like to move forward with some of those programs and figuring out what will be the best use of those funds and how we can utilize it to incentivize and also help property owners invest. But yes, awnings, windows, brick, facade, that is something the DDA is interested in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may be a question for Robin. But with the in-kind that you talked about, the $251,000, where does that live in the budget?
Right. Mr. Chairman, through you. So I guess I missed the in-kind discussion. Oh, it's in, it's right here in this. This is an in-kind donation.
Chair members of the council, it is actually on page 172 of the document. And the budget that was prepared were the early numbers before. The numbers had been crunched, so the 250 is actually a little bit higher as presented here. The number that's reflected based on the salaries and benefits and everything that was the final number through the budget is $195,915, which is a decrease of 7% from the previous fiscal year. And that was due to the reasons I noted earlier.
Mr. Chairman, so it's not 251, it's 195?
Chair, through you, that is correct. It's 195, 915.
Thank you.
Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be very brief. Sophia, I think you've got a huge job in front of you. The DDA has had a very challenged history. Communication in the next year with the downtown business owners is going to be absolutely critical, and I know you're addressing that. But there's a lot of frustration, too. I mean, it's been a year now since the council felt they had to write a resolution to get sidewalks fixed. And we've had one fixed. I mean, it's just, it's just unacceptable. And I know there's lots of reasons. I get it. There's multiple departments. To me, now is the time to plan those and do the work in the winter when we don't have a lot of people downtown. Trying to fix sidewalks in the middle of the summer busy season is just counterintuitive to me. So now, I think, whether you have to hire somebody to write the RFPs, to design it, whatever you have to do, I think now is the time to do that and put it out for bid in the fall and winter. We finally got some concrete curb and gutter fixed over the winter downtown, but it took several years of pleading to make that happen. So there's a lot of eyes on you, both from the business owners, from the council. It's going to be a real challenging year, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Okay. Online, Jennifer, is there some comments from council people online?
Go ahead, Councilman White.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, at this time. Thank you.
And that's it? Okay. Well, that seems to have covered the DDA. I think we can move on to the Planning and Development Department.
Chair, thank you. Apologies for jumping the gun on the agenda. This is a little bit of overview about the Planning and Development Department and the changes that you'll be seeing for fiscal year 26 with the budget. All right. First of all, this is a department structure. In the department, we have 15 employees, including myself, and we have essentially four different groups. We have the Parks and Greenway Planner, that one position where they're responsible for Parks and Greenway planning. You all know her as Jeannie Anderson Shrednik. She has been with our team for a little while now and has done a monumental job in putting together different greenway projects, securing lands, and doing designs for different greenway connectors in the community. We have our planning and current development division, which Seth Lloyd is our senior planner. He is looking over our planner twos and our planner ones. Right now, we have two planner twos, which you see quite frequently at meetings of the governing body, Connor White and Aaron Fagan. And we have Brandon Gilchrist, who has joined our team as a planner one. Just about 10 months ago, he joined our team. And we do have one vacant planner, one position that is presently advertised right now, which we're hoping to fill in the upcoming months. We have the Downtown Development Authority. Sophia did explain the structure there a little bit earlier, but that's how they are shown on our tree. If you notice, with the Downtown Development Authority and the MPO, you see a dashed line for connection up to the director. The reason for that is that the policy and the direction and their goals and their work plan, those organizations are set by somebody else, they're not set by me. My job and my role with the Downtown Development Authority is to assist with personnel, to ensure that we're hiring and making sure that they are there. Their goals and what they do for their day-to-day operations are intended to be directed by the DDA Board. We also serve as the fiscal agent for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. That is a four-and-a-half-member department. What they do is they do our long-range plans. We do share an office manager with the MPO. It is funded 50/50, and that office manager is Giselle Pacheco. They presently have one vacant position, a GIS technician. It's my understanding that they look to bring someone onboard in the near future. In the Planning and Development Department, we really do capture a whole bunch of different elements. With our 15 staff, we really do have eight different legs. And the ninth leg would be Personnel Management and all the fun stuff that comes with administration. But we have current planning, long-range planning, the MPO, Historic Preservation, Urban Renewal Authority, Downtown Development Authority, Parks and Greenway Planning, Brownfields Revolving Loan Fund. We have a whole bunch of different legs, different directions, a different grouping of items that are all put together in a puzzle where we work together to make sure everything's moving forward in a positive manner. Again, the Planning and Development Division, this is six-and-a-half full-time employees, that half-person being our office manager. We're responsible for the Parks and Greenway planning, coordinating development, the updates to Unified Development Code, which you've seen quite a few of. We support the Historic Preservation Board monthly. And then we also support the Urban Renewal Authority, which we've made a lot of significant advances with in recent years. This picture, I just wanted to highlight this. This was actually taken this morning when our Greenway Planner, Jeannie Anderson Shrednik, went out to Burlington Trail. This is a project that we coordinated in conjunction with the development of the Microsoft Data Center, that location, for construction of a greenway, which ultimately will connect the greenway along HR Ranch Road to the greenway at the Leeds Business Park at that location. And there's a small connector we'll put in, but this is a path that's just been poured, and it looks like it's pretty much ready for use. In the Planning and Development Department and especially the Development Division, we use these as our guides to where we go with our regulations. These are three different elements of our long-range plan, which is collectively referred to as Plan Cheyenne. And that's one word. Plan and Cheyenne capitalized and put together. That's been in effect since 2006. The center plan you see there is Connect 2045. That is our transportation plan, which basically identifies what our streets need to look like, what our goals are. They're transportation-oriented. What are major roads? What are local roads? Those types of items. That was last updated in 2045 and is presently in the process of being updated for 2050. Since the MPO is mostly majority federally funded, we are required by federal highways to update that plan every five years. So you will see these plans continue to come forward every five years for the transportation update. In 2025, in February, we finally updated our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Director Jason Sanchez and Jeannie Anderson Shrednik played a very active role in putting this together, lots of community meetings. And this replaced a plan from 2006. A lot of stuff has changed in the community since 2006. And then we have our community plan, which is last revised in 2014. I'll get to a little bit more discussion of that later. But this was initially developed in '06 with Plan Cheyenne as well. This is the one that really describes the non-transportation, non-park-related items for the community. And it sets the stage for what type of regulations should we have regarding building design, regarding policies for annexation, policies for growth outside of the city limits, policies for like our 201 IGA, which we've discussed a lot at recent council meetings. With those plans, all those plans resulted in the creation of a Unified Development Code, Unified Code. Unified Development Code is just a fancy name for development regulations. They're called different things all across the country. They could just be called city ordinance, land development regulation, regulations, land use regulations, development regulations. Ours landed on calling it Unified Development Code. One of the items with the UDC, which was adopted in two thousand and twelve, is that we do solicit feedback from users and citizens annually. And every year in January and February, we present those to the feedback we receive to the Planning Commission and also to the City Council on a work session, and we receive direction on where we want to go, and where we believe the governing body and the Planning Commission want us to make amendments. As you've seen, we brought a couple of text amendments through recently. Those text amendments are a direct result of feedback we've received through the process. Now, what do we do upstairs? We have a whole bunch of different items that occupy our day. This year, we didn't track the exact number of our building permits that we review, but these are the day-to-day operations that we see for applications. Items that you see in blue, those items are all ones that require a public review process. That could either be in front of the governing body, the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, the Urban Renewal Authority, a variety of different bodies. These have to go out to public review. The items you see in the pink color, those are administrative approval processes. Those are processes that are administrative. They run through relatively quick, and they don't have the longer time period due to the public review process. Those are such items, such as administrative plaits, administrative uses, pre-application meetings, site plans, those types of items. And then the yellow ones represent just our internal processes. These could be items such as just processing of financial security for developments. Let's say someone wants to open early, but they haven't finished their landscaping. We allow for a financial security to guarantee those improvements, what we put in. Zoning verification letters that might be required as somebody is selling a property and their lender might need proof that they're in compliance, all those different items. This number has remained fairly consistent over the years. With our rollout of OpenGov, we continue to see efficiencies in how we handle work and how we process it. That six hundred and eighty-four total applications, that does represent a decrease of just about six percent from the previous year. So physically, we have, the number is less, but some of the other projects have been a lot more complicated. I would note that we have a lot of, we have additional site plans that have come in, and just this year, with the rollout of OpenGov, we did split our site plans into two categories. We have full site plans, which are the ones with a more lofty review and a lot of coordination, and then we have minor site plans, which are envisioned to be more of a just administrative, quick review to get them in and then out the door. Our review timelines are touch base on it. I would like to say we are probably the fastest in the region when it comes to review timelines. This would include communities like Laramie, the other communities in the front range. Our administrative review periods, you're really set up in a three-review process where your first review, when you submit a site plan, we will have comments back to you within twenty-one days. You can expect three to four months in other communities. Some front-range communities, you can expect six months, even a year, for those comments to come back, depending on the complexity of a project. Your second review, so let's say we had comments, comes back. Once they resubmit, we'll get the comments back in ten days, and then every subsequent review after that would be seven days. So a lot of it is making sure that communication is going back and forth, and the developers are understanding, and they do appreciate understanding when comments will get back. I would like to say that we can hit those deadlines all the time, but things do happen, and sometimes there are a little bit of delays here and there, but we hate to see those delays because those leave a bad taste in people's mouths, and we try to continually improve. Conditional use and variances, those go to the Board of Adjustment. Those are relatively quick. Five-week review, we've narrowed them down just as much as we can, based on notice requirements that we're required to provide based on state statute. Our subdivisions, we have approximately a three- to four-month review, and that's for applications that don't need major revisions. Most of them don't, and those go to the Planning Commission and governing body. We are unique here in Cheyenne that we have the expedited plat process, which allows a preliminary plat to go to the Planning Commission, and then it gets forwarded to the governing body as a final plat. That cuts off four months out of review easily for an applicant, and most people choose to go through that mechanism for subdivision approval. So what does that do? That helps get lots on the market faster, and when developers are looking to acquire lots, time is money, they want to make sure that they can get shovels in the ground. Zoning and annexation, vacations of rights-of-way, those are ordinances, approximately a four-month review. When we have a project that sort of takes a little bit of everything, we work with the developer to make sure we can align a review schedule that makes sense for everybody and then limits the duplication of public meetings. This is one of our calendars that we put out, so we have this all published on our website, so everyone knows if they submit by, say, January tenth, and they're going through an annexation process, they'll be finished by April eighth of two thousand and twenty-four. We implemented this back in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. We put this review schedule out. We've had different iterations of it, but it is something that really works well for development, for developers. Leeds really enjoys having this to give to some of their clients that come in. So another leg of the department is our Metropolitan Planning Organization. Just a real brief overview of what they do. They're four-and-a-half employees. They carry out the goals of the Policy Committee, which is comprised of the mayor, a representative from the county commissioners, and also the YDOT district engineer. They do meet quarterly at Policy Committee meetings, and they also meet when necessary, but they essentially create a work plan for what the MPO needs to complete annually, and they also develop a transportation improvement plan, which is called the TIP, which is a priority list for where urban systems funding is distributed in the community. Recently, our TIP included projects such as US Thirty, Whitney Road, Del Range, and other items, but those are projects where we get money passed through from the state. The Policy Committee indicates where that money will be spent, and lucky for us, project or progress happens because we do have a healthy funding. We serve as the fiscal agent to the MPO. What does that mean? Basically, we're reacting to what the Policy Committee's work plan is. If they have a contract that comes in front of the governing body, we're obligated, under our master agreement, that we are obligated to approve it because it is just us managing the money as a pass-through. Downtown Development Authority, Sophia did a wonderful job explaining the Downtown Development Authority. This is the map of the district. We're all relatively familiar with, since it was just increased. There's some properties that were included on the northwestern area in blue, and then with the recent expansion of the district, we added on the perimeter streets, which are shown in yellow, to the previous district. The reason for that was to help allow for any public-facing improvements to also be included in areas on the south side that would be in adjacent rights-of-way. Celebration for them is they recently adopted the Plan of Development, which you all also passed. Thank you. So we have another element. This might be repetitive for a couple of you all. This is our Boards and Commissions. They're not as quiet as what you see in the picture here, usually a little bit more talkative, but through our department, we have a lot of Boards and Commissions. I'm just going to skim over this really quick. We have our Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. These are ones that you hear of quite often. Board of Adjustment, they're decision-makers. These are the folks that make decisions on conditional uses, such as multifamily in some locations, historic horse racing terminals, off-track betting, they're the decision-maker on that. They also hear appeals of decisions, and they hear variance requests. So if someone wants relief from a setback, say it's twenty-five feet and they want a lesser setback, this is an option for them to move forward. We have a Historic Preservation Board, which meets monthly. Councilmember Escobal, I believe he is our liaison to that, and that is a very active group. We have about, I believe we have ten, we have nine Historic Preservation Board members right now, and a couple of vacancies on the board. They are our certified local government pass-through for certified local government grant funding. What is that? Basically, the State Historic Preservation Office is pass-through funding from the feds, which is distributed to communities for preservation-related grants. Right now, a grant that is active with Historic Preservation Board is one doing a structural assessment of the Masonic Temple. That's in progress right now. They also have grants for nomination of the airport terminal as a national historic place, and also a grant to perform research on Black history in the community of Cheyenne. We have our Brownfields Revolving Loan Committee, which is a joint coalition between the city and the county. This one is a grant from the EPA, which honestly is about to expire, and this grant provides the ability for people to enter into unique financing arrangements to help remediate environmental contamination and does offer grants for cleanup for nonprofits. A successful grant application we had through this program was for the Bell Building back in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, where they utilized this funding through their nonprofit that the owner at that time had to basically clean and remediate contamination in the building, and that grant also funded a new roof for the building, shoring it up for future reuse. And we have all seen it today. It looks a lot better than it did back in two thousand and eighteen. We have Urban Renewal Authority, which, again, is for urban renewal. I will look forward to probably another upcoming work session, which we'll look at to continue to discuss urban renewal as it moves forward. I mean, it is a pretty intense concept, and I believe that we need to continue to educate everyone on how this works, and we're continuing to have discussions and make progress with other communities and the county assessor's office regarding how the increment works. We do have what I'm viewing as what will be a successful project happening at Nineteenth and O'Neil. This is the West End Flats Multifamily Development. This is one that is expected to be completed in about sixteen months or less, one hundred and one new units, market rate in the downtown. They're also looking to do a second phase of development that would be located out on US Thirty, which would be about two hundred and four units. Jeannie Anderson Schretnick, our Greenway Coordinator, she supports our Greenway Advisory Committee. This is a very active group. They are essentially a nonprofit that, they have a nonprofit wing, but this group also helps prioritize what type of greenway projects are there. They've been really active in the trenches recently with ensuring that they have priorities that for upcoming six penny. And they do have their Spring in the Green 5K that is on June seventh, so highly advise that y'all head out on June seventh, it's Spring on the Green fundraiser, which is at L-triple-Z. Downtown Development Authority Board, we're familiar with that. That's just met here before this meeting. Our MPO, they are very citizen-oriented. Their primary goal is to provide input and solicit feedback from the public and also experts within the realm of transportation. They have a Citizens Advisory Committee that does meet quarterly, and they discuss concerns that they bring up, and then they do review plans and documents. Christopher Yane, our MPO Director, he is actually revamping the Citizens Advisory Committee and is now turning into a Citizen Advisory Team, which would meet online. They'd have Zoom meetings more frequently because we were having trouble getting people to apply to be on this committee, they didn't want to come to the building and stuff, but now that we've started that process, we've had a whole slew of interests that has been coming in for this committee. We also have the Technical Committee. This is a huge committee. They review plans for the MPO. They also help set direction, and they're the intermediary between the Citizens Committee and the Policy Committee. And again, the Policy Committee, they are the legislative branch of that. They direct what staff does, and they direct the program. So, and then, of course, we get to go to most of the Public Services Committee and sometimes the Finance Committee as well. So something we strive to do and we continue to do is we want to make sure that all of our Boards and Commissions are online. We're anxiously awaiting a new Agenda Center when that does get pulled out because we've pulled this together using the resources that we have right now, but you're able to find all of our current agendas, past agendas, and staff reports in minutes. All of the information is online. We've tried to make it easy with these vanity URLs. So for the Planning Commission, it's slash PC, BOA, HPB, so everything is set, so it's user-friendly to find. So moving on to the budget, this is, we don't have, we have one change that's very minimal. This is the five-hundred-dollar increase to memorials and trophies. This is to account for the increase in cost related to our Leclerc Jones Award, which recognizes historic structure, energy voice award as well, which recognizes historic structure. These awards keep going up a little bit every year, but these are events that the Historic Preservation Board, these are awards the Historic Preservation Board really enjoys giving to members of the public. It increases heritage tourism and acknowledges commitments to history in our community. I don't have the name of the current recipients in front of me right now, but they are planning to go through a public announcement who those award winners are in the near future. One thing that's new is a little bit lofty here, and I did have to talk the mayor into this. I think he didn't want to do this at first, and then he just, he thought it would be an okay idea to put in the budget. This is a one-time fund for two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which would update the final third leg of our comprehensive plan, Plan Cheyenne. So this is the Community Character Plan. This is a plan that was included in the initial two thousand and six Plan Cheyenne adoption, and then it was revised in two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and fourteen, it was a document that, in two thousand and six, it was a joint document with the city and the county, and then two thousand and fourteen, it kind of split away, they peeled away, and had two different plans. In early discussions with the County Planning Office, we've discussed possibly looking at doing another joint plan, but those are more conversations that would have to be done with the county commissioners. But at minimum, what this would do is it would update our goals and principles for our community plan. So what are these items? I'll get to those in a second. In this plan, we have seven different foundations, so those are the broad topic areas, and then in those foundations, we have a total of forty-two different principles. I'll show you an example on the next page. And then in the end, there's a hundred and forty-five different policy statements. These policy statements are statements that are envisioned to result in regulation or deregulation. What it is, is it says, you know, we need to encourage multifamily housing, da-da-da, you'll sort of talk about that, and then we would use that as a guide to draft and create that zoning ordinance. Similarly, there's other policies that do need to be revisited because these policies are from about eleven to twelve years ago, and they may not be exactly congruent with the current times. So here's the foundations that we have. Growing as a community of choice, livable hometown neighborhoods, vital economy and activity centers, develop a connective and diverse transportation system, celebrate our character in varied heritages, creating a legacy of parks, open spaces, and trails, and developing in a fiscally responsible way. These are all good foundations, but these are reflective of a lot of the past trends. A lot of the plans that we have today aren't necessarily aligned this direction, and this one does have some extreme uniqueness on the way it was organized based on the two thousand and six plan. So this is just a little snippet of a couple of these to show you what this looks like. So for example, under one of our principles, or one of our foundations, this would be foundation number one, growing as a community of choice. foundation number one, growing as a community of choice. We have a principle that our community will continue to have a balanced land use pattern with choices of housing and employment for long-term stability. And basically, you have all these action statements that surround that principle as to how we can get there. A lot of these we've checked off, a lot of these we we haven't checked off, but we've pulled these all out of the document, and we have a matrix put together that shows where we stand with these different items. Notice policy one point two point A on the bottom, it's regarding the urban service boundary. That's been the hot topic lately. It's, this is our two oh-one IGA. This is our two oh-one exceptions. This would allow us to essentially hire a consultant that would manage this plan. They'd solicit public feedback, they'd solicit feedback from all the different stakeholders, council members, planning commissioners, board of county commissioners, county residents, to continue to understand what our policy should look like for the urban service boundary. In addition, we have some other other ones. This is under the second foundation, and this one is regarding livable hometown neighborhoods, just another example in here. I find policy two point one point D in the bottom right, a little bit different from where we are now. That one essentially is encouraging the depletion of our residential structures along arterial streets to say, let's convert them to office uses and stuff like that. That may have been something trending back at that time, but we're in a time of of a need of housing, taking it off the market for that necessarily isn't the best option. So I just had one more in here, which was just a little bit to talk about how this plan has kind of been sort of on the back shelf a little bit. So it does have a lot of unfortunate overlap with the transportation plan that has been updated in two thousand and forty-five and is presently being updated, and it also has overlap with the recent Parkson Recreation Master Plan that was adopted. Essentially, we have a snapshot from two thousand and fourteen that is in this plan of demographics. We have policies that have been overwritten by those plans. We need to have this plan at minimum scrub those conflicts out so we don't have conflicting So regarding the, does anyone have any questions on this element? This is the the biggest item on the the budget, and that's pretty much a wrap-up right after this for me. Okay.
I did, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Escobal?
Yeah, through you.
I'd like to recognize you before you speak.
Okay.
You may go ahead.
Do we, who did we contract out the last time to do this?
Chair, through you. The Councilman Escobal. Clarion Associates, Clarion Associates, they're a planning firm out of Colorado. They were the ones who were contracted on this. I believe it was their Fort Collins office.
Okay. That's a Mr.
So before we go much further, Mr. Bloom, I I wasn't clear exactly when you talked about all the information you had up as to the past records of your organization. How does, how are you doing right now with Open Gov, and how is that proceeding?
Chair and and the the council, Open Gov has actually been really good with saving us a lot of time. There are a couple of headaches, there are growing pains as we convert into this this software. We do have a good relationship with the developers of Open Gov, and they've been very responsive, sometimes not quick enough, but they have been responsive to some of our concerns that we have had. One of the best items we're seeing with Open Gov is the ability for developers and individuals to pay online with either an electronic check or with a credit card payment. We still do accept cash, we do accept check as well, but they have the ability to make those payments. It's seems to be working very well to allow us to easily create a record or create an item. It's not near as archaic as the old one, and I believe it's creating a lot of efficiency.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Emmons?
Mr. Chair, through you. So two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars seems like a tremendous amount to do a develop a plan. Is that typical of what we've paid in the past?
Chair, through you, to Councilmember Dr. Emmons. That actually is pretty much right on par with what we would expect for the limited scope that would be there for that plan. A full comprehensive plan, like for a different community, which would also include the Parkson Recreation element and also include the transportation element, that could be upwards of three hundred and eighty to four hundred thousand. I believe the city of Laramie is exploring, they actually have recently selected a consultant to update their entire two thousand and seven plan, and that is right around that four hundred thousand dollar mark. This two hundred, two hundred and thirty-five or two hundred and thirty-five thousand, after just chatting with a couple of different consultants, they do believe that that's right in the ballpark. What we do intend to do is request that people put together letters of interest, and then we would be able to pick the most qualified and and work with them on on the funding. The MPO plans, for example, the last connect two thousand and forty-five, which was just one element, I believe that was around three hundred and sixty-five thousand. That was mostly federally funded. It was right up in there for that plan element.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, Mr. Bloom. So just clarifications, so the two hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is to update this whole plan, the one that you currently showed us to update for two thousand and twenty-five or two thousand and twenty-six. Am I correct?
Chair, through you, to Councilman Moody. Yes, that is correct. This would be to update that plan. It would have community outreach. It would definitely be a plan that would have community feedback.
No one else here on the dais? Do we have comments online? Wow, well, this is coming in right at the hour. If no one else has any other questions, thank you for your presentation, and this meeting is adjourned.
I can't read those small graphs.
The small graph.
I have put you, I have put the DA because it was after Romania, I thought people would want to stay.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
They creep back like this. Look at this one. But I was looking at my colleagues, and they weren't even looking at the screens, and then when the big stuffs up.